Jack, may I have the floor for one second?
Yes, I'd like to turn the floor over.
Okay, so you guys, you see in front of you that the clerk has left us a couple of emails regarding the rules of order that were adopted on January, in January, okay? So, just, just a couple of things. So, I, I made her make a copy so everybody knows. So, very short and brief, and this is not to point fingers at anybody because, to be honest with you, I don't really know all the, I didn't know until I read up on them, all the rules of the Committee of the Whole that was adopted by the majority. Okay, so, in the future, before any meeting is called, you need to have five people. And I'm gonna bring up, I'm gonna bring up the point of budget meeting that was called on, for this coming Monday, okay? Obviously, we all know the importance of what's going on with this budget. We need to have the, the majority of our, not more than the majority, we need to, we should, every person should have been talked to individually and had the okay to come to that meeting, okay? We have one person who's probably got the most experience on the council in the budget can't be there. Mr. Carcone can't be there. The meeting, and all I'm trying to say is, in the future, there's two things that need to happen. You need to go to the clerk with your five people, and she needs to say, "We have a quorum." If not, she needs to send an email out saying, "We'd like to have a meeting at this time, okay? Can I get five?" And there's my next point. Those two people in that office, I don't know about you, but anytime I've talked to Melissa or Andrew and needed anything, they jump through hoops for me and get it done. There's no reason in the world, with the technology that everybody has, a phone, a computer attached to their hip, that they should have to go wait 24 to 48 hours to chase a quorum down. So, I'm gonna just ask all of us, within 24 hours, if you want to respond as a group, if you don't want to respond, let's please do it, let's act professional, and let's, let's do the right thing. As far as our Monday meeting here, I'd really like to see that get postponed. I have a North Utica, I have a North Utica meeting, I said I would come, but to be honest with you, that North Utica meeting is my district where the people support me, and if I'm not there for that meeting, okay, this is an important time. I got a feeling I'm gonna have to stand up there and take the rap and explain what's going on with the budget. And, and the way that meeting was called, I don't think it was called the proper way, and I, it's nothing against Jack, nothing against anybody, I just think we're a new council, and I don't think we know all the rules the way it's supposed to be, and I, I just don't think it's right. I think we need to have nine people present at the, at these, at this budget meeting when we're going over all this stuff. So, that's my point. I mean, I'll make a point to be here, but I'm gonna have to leave, you know, and I don't think we should have to rush through. And, and please feel free, any of yous, if you're not, you know, if you think I'm wrong at what I'm saying, or you disagree with anything, I'm just saying, we need to do the right thing, we need to be polished, we need to follow the rules, we need to, to do the right things. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Point well taken. Go ahead, Frank.
Is anybody else gonna meet, miss Monday's meeting here?
Sam's not gonna be here.
I am. I'm not gonna be here. Sam's not gonna be here, and I'm not gonna be here.
I'm not gonna. I'll be away.
Yeah, me too.
Well, you're gonna be the whole week?
I'm not coming back till Tuesday.
I'll be back Wednesday morning.
Yep, next week.
So, you did it Wednesday and Thursday, maybe next week? I mean...
Yeah. Let me see.
Does anybody have a problem if we, if we look at these and fix them?
No, I agree the rest of the week.
Okay. I listen, I'm gonna go wherever, what you said is, is, is fine with me. So, Monday meeting, is anybody, everybody open for Thursday?
I can't make to Thursday.
Thursday? Can you make it Wednesday?
We already got it.
Can you make it Tuesday?
I can't, I can be late Tuesday, but I can make out of, I can't do it.
Well, see, this is, this is an issue we have, I mean, some people can make it, some can't, you know?
Well, I would, I knew this, I would, I would understand.
So, the only thing, the only thing I'm saying, when we go through, again, when we go through, like, the week we're gonna have off vacation, we never, we don't get an email that say, "We're gonna have this week."
Well, next year, we'll, we'll try to do it a little differently.
That's all we're saying.
Point well taken, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can you say something?
Please, Judge.
I wanna clear up that meeting of the whole thing. First of all, you have to have five people have a Committee of the Whole meeting. First of all, a person, any council member, can request a Committee of the Whole meeting. But a council member has to give a time and date of the Committee of the Whole meeting to the clerk, because the councilman, see, I, when I was reading our, our rules, they're just a little bit off. Councilmen do not determine if they have five members. We've long, we've gone through that with the Ethics Committee. What they, any of you, and including the Chairman of the Committee of the Whole, tells the clerk, "I'd like to have a meeting on Tuesday at five o'clock on March 3rd. Would you poll the membership?" Because the members cannot poll the membership, you cannot do that. So, first of all, somebody has to determine when they want the meeting, and then they tell the clerk, and then the clerk should poll, poll the body, and if the clerk can get five people, you got a meeting. And I agree with Mr. I-
Judge, but you should never get an email saying, "We're having a meeting the 24th, 26th, and 4th," without anybody knowing about it.
Well, I think that's a matter of semantics, but I think you're right, that's not the way it's done. You say that a meeting has been requested for March 3rd at five o'clock. Can you attend? Let me know immediately, because we need five affirmative votes.
Exactly.
And that's what you do, you respond immediately.
Right.
I think now, as many of you should attend the budget meeting together as you can.
Absolutely.
Because you're not gonna get all these people together at spotty times. You know, you wanna get somebody there, ask them all the questions, and you get all the answers if you're there. Well, and unfortunately, what always happens with a body, you all have lives, you have daughters having a baby in Michigan, "I'm not gonna be here," this, that, and the other thing. Sometimes you cannot achieve nine, but the goal should always be to achieve nine, because then you don't have to repeat anything, everything all the time. And of course, you always invite the President, you always invite the Attorney, and I do not attend any meetings, when they had committee meetings in the old days, I never attended committee meetings, because there's only four people there, and I don't wanna listen to it twice. And I won't give little, I, I give a legal opinion, I give it to all of them. But I will say, and I do not attend political meetings. In other words, if there's a political caucus of, of the four Republicans, I will not attend it. If there's a political caucus of the five Democrats, I will not attend it. I cannot attend those kinds of meetings, because I, I represent nine people, I don't represent five and four, or six and three, or anything like that. So, I want you to know that, if you're gonna have a meeting amongst yourselves, the political people to talk about something, I will not attend those meetings. So, don't ask me, because I don't think it's proper. That's all I wanna say about that. But, you know, cooperate with the clerk, make her life less miserable, and respond immediately. If you can't make it, maybe, and when you respond, suggest a date when you're gonna be available, that also would be very helpful. But, you know, you're all, you all have your own lives, and you're not gonna exactly run at the same date and time. If you're gonna, if you're gonna have meetings about this budget, I think the more of you that are present, at the time you're interviewing a person from a department, the better off you're gonna be. And so, you'll all know what the problem is, and what you do, which your vote is your business. That's all I had to say on that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna go through what we have in Committee of the Whole right now. The first thing we have is ordinance, removing the traffic island. We plan on keeping that in the...
Yeah, I'm guessing the red over.
Red over. Any issue with bringing that out, or are we leaving it in?
Well, I don't, do we have the information that we requested?
No, it said 90 days, and it's been 90 days, but we haven't received anything yet. So...
Yep, my understanding is that this time, we're waiting on the results of a, a traffic study and an update from the UPD on what's going on in the area, so until that time, my position is, leave it in committee until we can get some statistics on what's been going on there the past several months.
Seven and eight go along with that though.
Correct, yeah, we'll take a, okay, the next one is ordinance number seven, intersection where stop required. Let me take a look at that.
Yeah, that's, that's all.
That's the same place, right, so, I'm assuming we're gonna leave that in, correct?
Yeah.
All right.
Seven and eight?
Yeah, and eight would be the same thing, we're gonna leave that in as well. All right.
We'll wait for another check.
Samantha's there on, on number three, but she said she was gonna keep that in there for a while, so we'll just leave that there. That's the audit into the appropriations of spending in regards to all paving, including streets.
Is that piece gone?
No, she never pulled it out, she, she wanted to leave it in there. All right. Next one is number five, sale of URA property. I didn't, I don't have this to pull it out, did you guys, is there a reason we're leaving that in there? Mark? 'Cause it's got yourself and, and Bermanster on that. That's number five, sale of URA property.
I think they were waiting on some final...
I don't know.
The one with the $135,000?
For the Masonic home?
Yeah, they were waiting on the work on the contract.
So, we're gonna hold that in until the contract is figured out?
Nothing's gonna work out.
Mike, do you know anything on that?
Yeah, that, um-
Can you tell, tell us what's going on on that?
Yeah, they're just finalizing the agreement.
When do you think that might come to fruition?
Um, it should be for the next council meeting.
So, hopefully, next council meeting, we could bring this out?
Yeah, I mean, it should be any day now, they were kinda finalizing a few things.
All right, thank you. So, we're gonna leave that in, we're gonna move on to the next one, number six. And that was, we're gonna, we decided to leave that in there as well.
Right.
It was an ordinance amending section 2-2104 of the Utica City Code. All right. Number six, ordinance approving the designation of Sonya Ahmed as an eligible and qualified project sponsor pursuant to Article 15 of General Municipal Law for the purpose of sale of 1419 Lincoln Ave. We're pulling that out, correct?
Yeah.
All right, that'll be pulled out. Next one is ordinance number nine, ordinance prohibiting the public consumption of cannabis. I think that's something that we were gonna discuss in, in committee. Any, anybody like to say anything on that? Mark?
Just pull it out.
I don't know if we're ready to pull it out, I have some people that aren't ready to pull it out. How about yourself, Joe? Any issues with that?
Well, I think we should, are we having a meeting to talk about?
Yes, we are right now.
So, my view, my view on this is, this is not, it needs to be explained, and maybe it needs to be amended a little bit, this has got nothing to do with people not smoking pot, it's no different than, or cannabis, I should say is the right word. It's got more to do with the difference of, if you're at Swifty's, for example, you can't walk down the street with an open container of a drink or anything like that, and I think that's basically all this is, is doing here, is to basically keep it so, you know, kind of on par with the alcohol, and, and that's basically all it is. I don't know if anybody else, I don't, I don't really have a problem with it, I can see where people would think that you're trying to go against a law that's already been passed, but it, it's not. It's more, it's more comparable to, you know, the laws that we have on alcohol and open container and stuff like that. Maybe the Chief of Staff can explain a little bit better, if he wants to say any more-
Yeah, I'll, I'll call on Mike when it's his turn.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
Uh, Venice?
Mr. President?
Let me have Venice fit.
On that ordinance there, I think you ought to discuss that again, when you have your pre-meeting tonight, when the representative of the police are here. I think you ought to have them comment on this, because if you're not gonna enforce it, or they don't think they can enforce it, or they have some comments, I think that would be very helpful to you, about how you feel about that thing, and how they feel about it. We know that the marijuana's a legal item now, but as far as the data ordinance, the Attorney for the Corporation Council, Mr. Giorgio, I know that she was in favor of the ordinance, at least that's what I got from her comments.
So, we-
But I think it would be in your best interest if you, when the police official comes here, whoever it is, Noonan or the Chief Williams, you should ask them about this, because sometimes they tell you, whether, they're gonna enforce it, or they think that it's possible enforcement. Other than that, I have no other comments. Mr. Giorgio stands behind it, I'd rather not comment on, on that either way.
All right. Mr. President and Majority Leader, you, you won't have any problem if I, if I pull this out during the meeting to have them discuss it during your meeting?
No.
Okay, so, I will, during the meeting, if one of you would like to call on the Representative of the Police Department to see if they'd like to comment on this, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you. Next one is ordinance number 10.
Do you want us to comment on it?
Oh, jeez, I'm sorry. I didn't finish going around, I was so, I was so enthused with what I had to say, I just-
Yeah, I know.
Go ahead.
I got a lot of phone calls about this.
Okay.
And the language is, is a little bit off. When people, when you put something in that says, "They can't do something outside," we need to be able to explain that. That's what everybody's upset about, is the fact that it says outside, and they wanna know what that means.
Right, so what are you doing with that?
And there's a lot of people that are on medical marijuana, that smoke outside, 'cause they don't wanna speak it out, they don't wanna smoke in their houses. That's most of the texts and emails I got. "What are you doing? I don't like smoking in my house, now you're telling me I can't go outside." So, I said, "Well, that's something we need to fix." And they also complained, which somebody brought up, at the last meeting about the language, right at the beginning, when they were describing the effects, and, I don't have it with me, the effects of marijuana, and they were saying that it makes people act hostile and stuff like that. I think somebody talked about that, and they were upset about the wording for that. And my biggest concern is, they're not gonna be able to enforce this at all. That's just my opinion. 'Cause when asked for, you know, loitering signs to put in certain areas in my district, they told me right to my face, "We can't, it's unenforceable." I mean, what are we gonna have, our police department doing, stopping everybody that's walking down the street, smoking a joint? I mean, they're doing it now, and it's when it was illegal. Now we're gonna make it legal, you think the police are gonna be stopping everybody? So, that's why I agree with the judge, that we listen to what the police department has to say, because I really think it's unenforceable. Thank you.
I'll, I'll come around back to you, Joe, Frank's next, go ahead, Frank. Thank you, Ben.
Well, it's definitely got, we gotta get an input from the police, but also, it's definitely gonna be similar to the no smoking areas, no drinking areas, you know, not around churches, not around playgrounds, wherever there's no smoking, that's definitely gonna be, and whatever else the police suggest, we should listen to them.
Thank you very much. I'll get to you, Mike, hang on a second.
Joe?
Sure, I, I agree that we do need to delve into this more with the UPD and Corporation Council, 'cause as I read this now, it's overly broad, there are no exceptions. Council, Councilman Irving mentioned, those individuals who don't wanna consume in their own homes, what if they can't, because they're renters and there's a policy at the apartment complex that states that there's no smoking inside the building, then they go outside and they're automatically in violation, as this is written. So, I think, you know, at the very least, we have to talk about this being overbroad and going perhaps beyond the intent, but I'll wait to the pre-meeting caucus to bring those issues up. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bermanster?
I agree with everybody, we should talk about more in depth.
All right, and we have our Council, Corporation Council person, we could get her along with that, we'll talk to you soon.
Yeah, the only thing I'll add is, I definitely wanna hear from UPD tonight, but if we can still keep it in committee, just to debrief whatever we hear, and, you know, maybe things do have to be amended of if we, that there, we know we are opted into consumption sites for Utica, so what that means outdoors, and as a city, we need to look at that, of what is allowed, and make sure that's part of the language.
All right.
Yes, just so, from the mayor's office, it's a piece of legislation that we're open to amendments, we're open to input from the council that makes sense for an appropriate action on, on this issue. So, it's not something that, you know, the mayor's office is, you know, strict on, it has to be currently as it is, we're open to the input and amendments as this body sees fit.
And I, we'd also be open if the mayor and the Corporation Council would get together and maybe make some amendments to this themselves and, and fix it, because I'm sure that you've talked to other people, and let's, you know, if we're gonna do it, if we're gonna do it, if we vote on, and we get five votes on it, we wanna make sure it's the right fit for, for this city and for, for the people, all right?
Absolutely, agreed.
All right. Rocco, did you want something to say?
No, I agree kind of with Venice, I just, how do you enforce it? I mean, you have so many laws on the books that we don't enforce right now, so I, I think it'd be very difficult to enforce.
All right, thank you. Joe said I go around to you again.
Yeah, the only thing I would say, I agree with all of it, and basically what I said to put some different language in it, but as far as impossible to enforce it, I don't think the police would try to enforce it all the time, I just think it would be a tool where if you, it's no different than, the police aren't stopping you if you, if they see you with a can or something, or a drink, but if you have a group, somebody who's out on the street, obnoxious and intoxicated, it gives them a tool to be able to arrest them or do whatever they need to do to eliminate it. So, it's, it's a good idea, and it's a little bit vague, you know, just like Joe says, I mean, people, you know, they're, they're thinking they can't go outside and smoke, it's more or less, the way I understand it, it's more or less in public places, just like Councilman Carcone said, places- Carcone said, places where you can't smoke cigarettes, you shouldn't be able to smoke cannabis. That's basically where we are with it, so, I think we're all on the same page, basically, so, thank you.
Any, uh, any last words on this, before we put it back in? All right, we're tucking that away, and then we're gonna discuss it during the, uh, the regular council meeting, we're gonna bring it up again. We'll talk to you.
Can I just say I like what Joe just said?
I'm sorry, say again?
I like what Joe just said about why it don't force my part, that it's gonna help somebody as young and unruly to be able to do something, so, yeah.
Uh, the next one is, uh, ordinance ten, dwelling registration fee, and I don't have this one highlighted. I'm not sure why we're not pulling this out, does anybody know why? What the issue on this was?
So, so my recollection from the last meeting is we sent, uh, two pieces of legislation down, one was the registration, and the other one was the fees associated with, um, either a cancellation or a no-show. Um, the cancellation, no-show legislation, um, you guys discharged and asked me to rework that a little bit, um, which I have not been able to do yet. I don't see any reason why you can't pass that legislation if that's acceptable to you. The fees associated with the no-show or a cancellation are totally separate, it's a separate, uh, section of the ordinance, um, we just sent them down together. Um, I should have that too for the next, uh, council meeting, so if you want to pull that from committee tonight.
Can you say there's another piece to this?
A similar piece, it goes with the ROP fees, um, but you discharged that, so, because I'm working out, um, which you should have for the next council meeting, so if you wanna vote on that tonight, you can, they're not pieces that go together.
Anybody have a problem pulling this out? We good on it?
No, we're just waiting for the.
We'll, we'll, we're gonna pull that out.
Yeah, which you should have for the next meeting, but that, they're two separate, um, sections of the ordinance.
So we're okay with that?
Right, so we're gonna pull, uh, ordinance number nine out.
Fine.
Excuse me, I'm, you're right, excuse me, thank you. All right, so now then we're gonna go to, uh, pose resolution thirteen, that's, uh, Resolution Authorized Adjustment to the Solid Waste Service Charge. I'm gonna go around. Mark, anything on this?
No.
Joe?
Why, who's listening?
This, this was, we put this in, and then we were gonna, had to go in, and we're gonna pull it out this week.
Did you have, did you have it sat on the offer, is that why?
I'm not sure why I laid it in there, I don't know why.
Anybody, is this a resolution?
Right, it's just a resolution. Anybody have a problem with this, pulling it out?
No.
All right, I'm pulling it out. All right, and then the final one, uh, resolution nominating a candidate to the Upper Mahawk Valley Regional Water Board, Dennis Bova, pull that out? All right, we good on that? All right.
Is nobody else, please, I think that we have to answer?
That's it, right. All right, and, and my, go ahead, speak.
But we still didn't discuss what we're doing with the budget, what the budget meeting is.
I'm just about to do that right now.
Oh, okay.
All right. We're gonna keep, you're talking about the, the three dates?
Yeah.
Well, I, I plan on keeping those, because we can't come with it that Monday.
Why don't you try to change the date, 'cause there's at least three missing.
The, the first one, yeah, the first one, why don't you just do it on Thursday, Debbie? Do it Tuesday, Thursday, and then the following Monday.
Let me take a look at that. Hang on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Wednesday, Thursday. And why, why can't you do it, oh, you can't figure it out?
Wednesday, Thursday.
Thursday, Friday.
Hang on.
Well, one, we might try to get it down to the, less as we count.
All right, Wednesday the twenty-eighth is good, March fourth is good. I don't want anything to go be passed.
No, you can do it on Thursday.
I don't want anything to go past March fourth.
You're gonna go to the twenty-ninth. Wednesday is the twenty-eighth.
All right, hang on, let me.
Wednesday between the twenty-ninth.
Hang on, let me, I just pulled my calendar.
Yeah, correct.
Does anybody have a problem with the twenty-ninth? Who are you, you're not gonna be here?
Definitely won't be here on Tuesday.
Maybe on Friday?
How about Friday the, uh, the first?
What about the Tuesday after the Monday? Well, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
No, I don't want any, I don't want anything before, the, the fourth is we're having a meeting, and I don't want anything after that.
No, Tuesday before it.
'Cause Monday is when I'm gonna have the, put in the final amendments on that fourth. Amendment.
Right, so if you put them in, and put the final amendments in on Monday, the fourth.
We could put the amendments in after the meeting, but.
Wait a second, you have, you're gonna put the final amendments in on the fourth?
Right.
The council meeting is on the sixth.
Right.
Okay, so why don't you have it on the fifth?
'Cause they're gonna.
That'd be the problem.
What's that, Joe? Say again.
So you said you didn't wanna have anything on the.
Is there any, is there an issue, have anything on the fifth? We could do the fifth.
Yeah, do the fifth.
All right, so we're gonna change, we're gonna change February, Monday, February twenty-sixth, we're gonna change that to March fifth. Where's our clerk?
Are you, uh, calling that March fifth for a, uh, for the whole meeting? Or are you calling it at?
It's just gonna be, these are the, uh.
Budget meeting.
These are the budget meetings, but they are committed at a whole.
It's a budget meeting, right?
Right.
It's not a, it's a non-voting meeting, right?
Correct.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
So I'll talk to her. That's good, Jack, that works out good. See how nice it is when everybody's here and you can talk, and nobody's gotta chase anything, and.
Yeah, it's nice when you can talk. We actually get things done. We good on that?
What's that?
We good on that? Have they come out?
Yeah, yeah, whatever they say. At what time? Same time, five o'clock?
Yeah, she'll tell her partner.
Now, I plan on holding a special meeting on, on, uh, March fourth.
No, March fifth.
Excuse me, uh, I mean, well, we're gonna have to, the, a meeting on the fifth to put in our amendments to do.
Right.
Yeah, so we'll do the special.
So, okay, so the special meeting's gonna have to be on the fifth then, too. I gotta change that.
Seven o'clock.
We'll do that at seven o'clock. All right, so.
So we're doing a budget meeting, five minutes, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll go five, and at seven o'clock, we put our amendments in. Let me just see a hand, and everybody can make it on, on the fifth for both meetings. One, two, three, four, five, six, okay, we have a form.
Right.
So everybody agrees on there, right?
Yes.
All right, I'll pass that on to the, to the clerk.
Okay.
All right? That's the end of my meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Last accomplished.
Very good.
Bring this meeting to order. It's a pre-caucus. We have a guest speaker tonight. I like to have the guest speakers get up and.
Mark.
How are you?
Good.
What's that? Yeah, that's bullshit.
Can you folks hear us? I'm Honoree Wallick.
Scott Warner.
Scott Warner. I can always, can you hear, we can bend over. We know how to do that. That's okay. I can also speak loudly. Can you hear me? Or is this feedback? Okay. It's kind of hard to talk about pools when it's cold, it's cold outside. But after watching that exchange, maybe we could all take a little dip and calm down, right? So I don't, not sure, I was talking to Katie Ilo at the coffee shop, and Scott and I are both swimmers. When I'm not doing my day job, I can be found in a pool somewhere because I love to swim. And the governor of New York has come out with a new proposal. We weren't sure that everybody knew. It's called New York Swims, and it's a hundred and fifty million dollar grant program that she wants to send to municipal pools. Dave Short and I have talked over the years. I love Buckley Pool. I've been swimming in it since I moved here twenty-six years ago. Addison Miller, Buckley Pool, Seymour Pool, they're beautiful pools. And I always go by and I look at those pools and I wonder why they're not covered. And actually, I've been to USA Swimming, the Olympic Trials a couple of years ago. We tried to talk to USA Swimming about giving us money here in Utica to try to get an elephant cover over that pool so the snow doesn't lay up in it and kind of wreck the pool. And then you had to spend four thousand dollars or whatever just to try to fix the pool to get it open for the two months that it's open. So she's got this initiative. Some of the money, sixty million of it, is going to come through DASNE, so it's under the dorm authority. So Scott actually does the Learn to Swim program, and some of this money is going to be designated towards teaching kids how to swim. One in three kids in the black community do not know how to swim. That's thirty percent of the kids. And the incidence of drowning in the state of New York are going up precipitously. So that's a big thing. For years, I'd ride my bike down by the armory, and in the river, you could hear the kids swimming in the river. You guys know what I'm talking about, right along that Sequoia River? And that was a worry. I know that the lifeguards were a problem. They didn't have enough lifeguards. I'm a certified lifeguard. I got my certificate back a couple of years ago. Scott actually is a swim coach in the New Hartford Swim Program. So he took a program that was nothing and built it up. Scott, tell them how many kids you have in the swim program and how many are on the waitlist.
Yep, so, actually, I'll go through everything, but just for our year swim lesson program. In the fall and the spring, we run an eight-week swim program that we can usually fit in about ninety-five swimmers. But because it's through the New Hartford School, we have to then prioritize New Hartford students first. Right now, we have ninety kids on the waitlist. And so we've been, we have full, we're full for this coming swim lesson program with ninety-five New Hartford students. And there are over ninety on the waitlist right now that we actually just had to email and tell them that we couldn't fit them in for this session. And hopefully, they can fit in for the summer session. So throughout the year, usually, we have to deny about a hundred and fifty kids in the area that are looking for a place to swim. I can't even count the number of emails that I get in a week with people that have moved to the area asking where they can get swim lessons, where they can go do lap swim. Any elderly people that are just looking for a place or an offer job, those kind of things. And even the lifeguarding piece, I have, just because of the swim program and finding our website, when you type in anything with swimming in the area, I've had teachers looking to see, hey, I have these students that want to become lifeguards. Do you offer this program? And just with, because we're running at the New Hartford School, there isn't that opportunity for the pool time. So there's all these programs that I think in this area we need, that we currently don't have because the only option right now largely through the area are just the pools in the summer for July and August.
Scott, tell them about Utica College. I'm not sure you all know this.
Oh, so, well, I hope, I hope everyone knows that Utica University has closed their pool. So that's now another, another facility that's gone throughout the, throughout the state. I think it's Alfred State or Alfred University, they're closing their pool. All of these facilities that money hasn't been put into for the last fifty or sixty years has just snowballed and now rather than fix them, because that number has grown and grown and grown from what they need, now they're closing all these pools, so. So, and Honoree and I had spoken just with this grant, the money for like SUNY schools for for lifeguarding classes, all these things. So hoping to get, again, something in this area where we can offer these kinds of programs because there's definitely a need.
I mean, and the thing is, I know that times are tough. I live in Utica. I know you have a budget that's sixteen and a half percent increase. This is grant money, a hundred and fifty million in grant money to renovate municipal pools. And municipal pools were originally built, I have a book that I read a couple of years ago, not knowing, for the immigrant population. The pools that were built in Detroit and Boston and St. Louis, when the immigrants came in, a lot of the people who were living there prior, prior wanted to make sure they were clean. So they had them, you know, swimming a lot to make sure everybody had a cleanliness issue, if you can believe it. So right now, it's just to renovate the pools, and we were thinking, can we get more extension? Now you're talking about, summer's getting hotter. What she's recommending is cooling stations. We only get two months out of the year that actually those pools are open. I know your kids swim, right? So it's very important, and everybody learns how to swim. I mean, if global warming's here, or it's not here, we've had a mild winter, not sure what the summer's going to look like. I would love to see Buckley Pool open at nighttime. I mean, wouldn't that be great? Got some heads nodding in the background there. What we need is more Learn to Swim programs. He's doing it in New Hartford. Can you imagine the number of people in Utica who want to learn how to swim, and we don't have any pools to use? If we could, and we mentioned to Dave Short, could we enclose with some of this money Buckley Pool? Maybe get a little bit more time out of it. Not huge enclosure. I've swum all over this country. You could have an enclosure with glass doors on it just to buy yourself maybe another two months on the front and the back end of the summer. The SUNY system, to clarify on that, will be trying to give them money to put it into the curriculum so that these kids actually can learn how to swim, teach swimming lessons, and get their lifeguard. It should be part of the curriculum. How many people in here probably remember you couldn't graduate from Hamilton College unless you could swim four lengths of a pool? I mean, some of you may know that. My father fought in World War II. When the boats were landing on Saipan and the boat was dropping, most of the guys were drowning, swimming into shore because, well, they couldn't swim, and they had ninety pounds on their backs. So swimming's really important. I'm not taking any more of your time. This is out there. Katie, let me know what the feedback would be. I don't know if we work with Community Foundation on getting a grant writer to see if we can get some of this money, but it's a hundred and fifty million. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Okay, we got legis, excuse me, you're going to have to bear with me tonight. I got a, I got a sore throat and headache and. We got some legislation to talk about. The first thing is the introduction of the local law. A local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of general municipality. Is there any discussion on that? Is this the two percent they were looking at? No.
If I could just make a note on this, this does have to be passed before March first. I would encourage you to pass it tonight. Again, this is not the increase. This is just waiving the levy to allow you to do so and give you that flexibility and the option. It does have to be passed before March first. If you choose not to pass it tonight, I would encourage you to call for a special meeting to pass it. That's our recommendation, and the administration's recommendation is to pass it. I believe the memo that was sent down by Charlie in our office set forth, obviously, the ramifications if you chose not to pass it or vote on it. But my suggestion is to pass it sooner rather than later. And again, it's encouraged before March first.
Is it state law that it says March first?
Yes.
I'm asking Corporation Council.
I just gave him, I gave him my memo, and I believe that it.
You want me to read it? May I read it?
I'm going to take a copy, but yeah, sure, if you want to read it.
So, to summarize, state law requires a cap on a tax levy for the upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year. It can be overridden, adoption of law prior to the adoption of the budget, and would be fiscally prudent to adopt such a local law on, in the budget process no later than March first. Adoption of the budget, which contains a levy that exceeds the cap, without adopting the override would require that any excess tax revenues over the cap be set aside in a revenue fine and applied to reduce the taxes for the following year. It would also require reduction in spending to meet the lower amount of the funds available. So it's by the state.
So my question is to you, if, if we, if we don't pass it by the first, do we have until the end of March, or do we, will we be penalized?
I, I don't believe you do. I, I'm checking on that, and I'll have an answer for you by the end of your pre-caucus meeting. But I believe the reason we gave the March first date is so that there's not any problems when you pass the budget. It's just simpler, easier when you do it ahead of time. I believe. I will confirm.
Okay, and my next question.
That's why I believe it was recommended to pass.
Yeah, if it's, if it is March first, I'd just like to see the legislation from New York State where it shows that specifically, so we can vote how we need to.
It's right here.
That's a memo. That's not actually from.
So my, my next question is, if, if we don't pass this, and, and, and the budget doesn't get passed, is there a cap that they can only go to, or if they go over the two percent, we get fined? I'm not, I'm confused. I try to read and am I in two different subjects? I don't, you know?
So, let me see if I understand your question. Passing the legislation that was sent down just gives you the option to do that. It's not the actual tax increase. If you don't pass that option, as Joe read in what's in the memo, you'll have to hold those funds in the reserve. The second part of your question, I think, dealt with.
A cap on if, if the budget goes back to the mayor because it wasn't passed.
I believe this still has to be passed. Like, you, you can't, you're saying if, if, if the mayor vetoes the budget once you've.
No, either way, by March thirty-first, this has to be done. So that's, no, nothing takes effect, whether it's amendments or the budget or a tax levy even, until it's March thirty-first. So I don't see why it would have to go till March first.
Joe, go ahead.
So my understanding is that, based on the, the prior memo we received, it has to be passed prior to the passing of the budget, not by March first. I believe March first was Corporation Council's recommendation.
That is, that is correct.
So the requirement's March twentieth, prior to the budget being passed, that this has to be voted on. That's my understanding at least.
Correct. But our recommendation is to pass it sooner rather than later, because the closer you pass it to the budget, the more problems that are associated with.
Sure, I just wanted to be clear on that, that the March first date isn't statutory. What statutory is the March twentieth?
It's prior to the budget.
Okay.
What would be the downside of not voting it in tonight? No downside to it.
Well, I guess my interpretation would be that if we vote on a two percent cap, then the mayor could install the budget where he wants to and not have to make any changes.
Oh, that's not true. We've still got to vote on the budget.
Well, I understand that. But I'm saying, you know, I don't foresee myself, I don't foresee myself approving a sixteen and a half percent increase.
Definitely not.
And I haven't seen the, and I haven't seen the budget yet. But, but I, if, my question is, if we allow this two percent, then it doesn't matter what we do. If we veto it, it goes back to him, he can still go over the, the cap. Is that correct?
We've still got to vote on the budget.
Well, we still vote on the budget. I understand that. This has, this has everything to do with the budget, as far as I know.
Has anybody seen the budget? I haven't seen the budget yet.
I just got it tonight.
Well, I haven't received the budget yet, and I'm supposed to vote on a, on a cap on my budget when I haven't even received the budget yet? When's our budget? When are we going to get the budget?
Right here.
I don't have one yet. I don't have one yet. And then I did happen to take a peek at one, and, and I noticed that the actual spending weren't even on there. So, say again?
You took a peek at one? You got it, or you didn't?
No, I didn't get one. No, do you see one on my desk, Mike?
Okay.
Okay.
Could've asked.
So, but, but am I wrong in my assumption that if we pass this two percent cap, and we, we don't pass the budget, the mayor still can have over a two percent tax? That's my question. Let's say, he's looking for sixteen and a half, and we can cut three percent, and it gets down to thirteen and a half. But, but, but we didn't pass it at sixteen and a half. And, and he doesn't like the thirteen and a half, and we go with this two percent, and he goes back to the sixteen and a half because he can veto us because we didn't have only a five-four vote.
How do you know we've got five-four?
I don't know. I'm only, this is all.
That's, that's why we're waiting to put in our, our amendments, and then we'll just see if we want to vote on it or not. Let's see if the mayor wants to work with us.
That councilman, or?
Yeah, I just heard the discussion about the budget. We just got the budget, what, an hour ago? Hour and a half ago, or something?
No, we got it.
Even if you did get it, you wouldn't have had a chance to look at it. So that's like irrelevant until we do get to sit down and look at it. But we just got it an hour and a half ago, maybe. So I don't even know how we argued about when the budget came out.
So is my thinking wrong?
I didn't understand exactly what you're asking, but I do. I, I am not sure about that. I would need to, to look into that. I'm not a hundred percent positive, and I don't want to give you the wrong answer. Regarding that. But I, I didn't understand your question. That's why I was.
Yeah, well, that's why I didn't understand. I can't vote on something I don't understand. And I've read it, and I'm and it, it looks like that if we, we don't pass it at sixteen and a half, and we come back with fourteen, thirteen, whatever, the mayor would have to agree with it. And if he doesn't, because we passed this cap, he could veto us if we didn't have a majority vote, I guess. I don't even know. I don't, but I don't know what's going to happen. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we, we have a little control over the budget. You know, the spending of, of our taxpayers' monies.
If I may just add something, I'd like to also point out, we have several committee of the whole meetings coming up, where we have department heads coming in, where we can ask questions and better understand where the budget is at, where the department head's needs are at. And I think after that, from my perspective at least, the more information we have, the better. And two of the three committee of the whole meetings do occur before March first. So we'll be able to speak with many department heads, see where everyone's at, ask questions, learn more, and see what we can do for the public out here based on what we've been presented in the budget. And that's where, where I am at, at this point. The more information, the better, for me.
So you agreed, can I have the floor?
Go ahead.
So you're agreeing to do it before March first, though?
I'm just making a point. Corporation Council's recommendation is before March first, and just to point out, two of our three committee of the whole meetings do occur before then. So we'll have an opportunity to speak with a significant number of the department heads for, for our departments here.
Right. And, and, one second, and I just want to, as a personal note, I am going to, I've been on the council for five years. I've missed one meeting. I planned a vacation around the council, around the first, the third week, okay, and around the budget meeting. So I'm going to be there for everything because that's how I planned it, okay? So when all of a sudden, we're going to have a meeting on an important thing like that, and we just pop it in on the tenth, that kind of bothers me. And when I hear comments like, it's budget season, well, I planned my meetings to be around the budget season. So I just wanted to state that for the record.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, and that's fine if you have your two, if you have several committee meetings prior to that, you'll just need to have a special meeting and call for a vote on, on that specific.
So, so my question, I guess, now is, if, if, for some reason, we don't pass it on the, by the first of March, are we going to be penalized as a community, a city?
That's not legal. It's just the recommendation. It's not actually New York State requirement by March first.
Is that right? I don't know.
Municipality, I'll let you take the floor as well, but municipality. Municipality, I'll let you take the floor as well, but municipalities pass budgets at all different times of the year. So, unless there's a specific day, that is 31 days before a budget is due, that's the legislation and the wording that I'm specifically looking for. I do understand the sentiment, though, of the Corporation Counsel's recommendation.
It has to be adopted prior to the budget. Our recommendation is passing it by March 1st.
But we have till March 31st.
Okay. Very good. So, are we gonna leave this in committee until after a couple of budget meetings, so we can-
This local law's tabled.
Well, it's tabled.
It's not a committee.
Right. Well, we'll keep it on the table. Is there any objections to keeping it on the table? Or do I have to take it off the table and put it in committee? Because it's been on the table for seven days. Judge? Can I take this off the table and put it in committee now? Because it's been on the table for seven days? Just leave it on the table?
The table is the committee.
Okay, I just wanted-
And I guess-
Table is just a word of our use in the statute of the political home law.
And if we get five votes, we can call a special meeting before, correct?
And I guess, the only point of clarification, the reason we were recommending March 1st, is there- because it's a local law, there's a number of other things that have to be done as soon as you act on it. One of those things is, we have to provide notice, and we have to call for a public hearing before the mayor signs it. So, on top of those things, the closer you push to passing it prior to the budget, the more issues that are associated with that. So, that's the reason for our recommendation for that.
Thank you.
Corporation Counsel, may I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Okay. So, as far as this goes, with Councilman Burmaster saying that if we don't pass this, it could be 16%, and he could override this, okay? The way I understand this, this is basically just saying, the taxes could go up over 2%. What he's saying, regardless, the mayor could do that, okay? If the budget, for some reason, passed 6 to 3, or I'm sorry, 5 to 4, okay, the mayor still- he has the right to veto it, and it's come back, and it's gotta be 6 to 4, whether you pass this, or you don't pass that. Am I correct?
Yes, it's just the ramifications that you don't have.
Right, right. So, this is basically telling you that, I mean, it's basically saying there's gonna be an increase of at least 2%. Or they- not even that. He's saying he could raise it at least 2%. That's all it's saying. Correct. So, no matter what happens, if the vote ever went 5 to 4, and I'm not saying it's going that way, I'm just saying, if it did, like the analogy that he brought up, the mayor could do the same thing, if you pass this, or if you didn't pass this. Correct. Thank you.
Well, I was thinking, over the 2%, if we don't pass that, then the mayor can only go to 2%. Am I wrong? If we don't pass this, the mayor can only go to 2%. And if he goes over the 2%, then we get in trouble as a city. Is that right?
Correct.
That's correct.
That's why we're saying to pass it. Because it doesn't mean that it will be- it doesn't determine what the actual tax increase will be. It just gives you the option to go over the tax cap. Once you go over the tax cap-
That's why I'm asking, what's the downside?
Well-
I'm not ready to yet.
Well, the downside is, if we come up with a number of 12.5 compared to the 16.5, and the mayor doesn't like it, he can still go back to the 16.5, and we don't pass the budget, and there's a cap of 2%, he can't go over to 2% without being penalized.
Who are you trying to penalize?
Well, I'm not trying to penalize anybody. I'm just making sure-
You represent the people.
I wanna make sure the people are heard, that they're- you know, I don't know how many phone calls you've gotten.
Plenty.
But I'll give you an example. I called a guy up to do work, and he said, "My price on my work went up 17%." I said, "Thanks." I said, "We don't even know if that's gonna be an increase yet."
All you're voting on is that a increase above 2% will not penalize the city, and in return, penalize the people that live in this city.
I understand that.
That in return, doesn't affect the police department, or the parks department, or the fire department.
I understand that.
There's not a responsible budget at 2%.
Can I interject here?
There isn't.
Thank you. Mike, we understand that these are difficult times, okay? We understand that. And roll your eyes, go ahead. That's good of you. But understand that we don't think 16.5% is a good budget. We think there's room in there to make some cuts, and we're responsible for the citizens of this city, just like you are, when it comes to public safety, and when it comes to everything else. But we wanna have a chance to take a look at this budget before we decide anything. Now, if we put legislation in, and put amendments in there, that the mayor just turns around because he doesn't agree with us, and wants it 16.5%, which I think is ludicrous, to be honest with you, because I'm sure we'll find some cuts in there, and he vetoes them, then I think he's hurting the citizens of this city, okay? Now, our only clout, to make sure that that doesn't happen, is to make sure we put our amendments in there, and they're in there long enough where they stay, and he can't veto them, all right? If the mayor wants to work with us, and sit down with our amendments, we'll be more than happy to sit down with the mayor, and discuss what ones he agrees with. It's not war. We're not looking to knock you out of the park, but we want a fair share. We want our citizens here to have a fair share, to come together on a real budget. Not a 16.5% budget, where I don't think there's a lot of people in this city that could afford a 16.5% budget. We're just looking to be fair, and that's all we're looking to do. We're not looking to trip the mayor up. We're not looking to trip any department up. We just wanna have a fair meeting with the mayor, after we put our budget, after we put our amendments in, and see if we could come to an agreement between us, all right? That's all we're looking to do. We're not looking to do anything different, all right? End of discussion. When we're ready, when you get our amendments, and the mayor wants to sit down with us, and discuss our amendments with us, we'll be more than happy to sit down with us. And we're not far left or far right. We're more than happy to meet in the middle, okay?
Okay, so we're gonna leave this on the table? We're gonna have those-
We're still gonna consider getting it passed for March 1st.
That's right. That's why we're gonna have the committee meeting.
No, we're not. No, we're not. We're not considering it.
If we get five, you have no choice.
We'll sit down with the mayor, and then we'll discuss when we wanna sign it.
If you get five, you have no choice.
We can bring it- we can bring it to a vote, we can bring it to a vote after the first two meetings, and we'll take it from there. But we'll leave it laid on the table for now. Okay? We're gonna have our committee meetings, talk about the budget, leave it on the table, bring it out before the 1st. If we have to call a special meeting, we will.
And if the mayor agrees with us on our amendments, we'll be more than happy to sit down with them and discuss when we're gonna pass it.
One more thing?
Just one more brief question for Corporation Counsel. Does this specific local law need six votes? I hear five. I wanna be sure on that.
I believe if, and before, I just need to pull that memo, and I don't have it in front of me. I believe part of that was if you passed it, there was a message of necessity. I believe if you passed it that night.
The first time?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't- I'm not confirming that, but I will.
Just wanted to ask. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. But that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna have our committee meetings. We're gonna discuss it. If, at that time, you wanna have a special meeting to bring this out, to have a vote, we can do that, so we can take care of it in the near future. But I'm gonna leave this laying on the table for now, okay? The next is a local law to establish the boundaries of the common districts. I know there was some talk about it. Councilman Irvin?
Oh, okay. Good. Well, I looked at the boundaries and everything, and I brought it up to the people in that district, and they looked at a lot of the way it was drawn out, and they're not very happy with it. So, there's no way I can support it. I know we do, but did you look at the cuts of the district? Have you looked at the cuts in District 5? It goes by population.
You can take any of that.
There's a lot of people complaining about it.
Is there another area in your area that could be part of the transfer? Does it have to be that particular area, or does it- because it's adjacent to the-
So, I'll put a judge on that question, but if, I just wanted to make it clear, Judge and I had this discussion. The actual internal election districts, where you're- which is what those smaller numbers are, is not actually what this local law is doing. You're just setting forth the actual district boundaries. I believe, and I believe Judge is gonna talk with the Board of Elections on that, I believe those will have to be either readjusted or renumbered anyways, because those are not correct. I believe once, just using the 5th district as an example, I believe once you take, I think it was 5-2 that was removed out of the 5th ward, you're missing a 5-2 within that, within the 5th district for the election.
So, you have to rename the other?
I believe so, and I don't know if they do any restructuring as to the actual boundaries of those. That is not something unfamiliar with. I would defer to Judge. I know he put this together.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask something?
Yes, you may.
Number one, you have to redistrict by law. And it has to be done now. That's number one. Number two, if you look at the numbers breakdown, that number breakdown is like for today. You're talking about a 10-year law. A lot's gonna happen in that 10 years. There are at least three developments that are already planned, are going on in Utica right now. We saw, over the 10-year period, I think we saw close to, I don't quote me on this, we had an increase of anywhere between 4,000 and 8,000 people. So, the map and the numbers that you see now, and who's in there, is not gonna be the same maybe five years from now. But we're not gonna change it every five years. We give a general description. Now, I think the reason why I am so anxious for you to settle, do this, because I've been working on it for so many years, I'm getting tired of it, quite frankly. And I'll tell you, and I went out of my way to make sure that I did not consult any political people. I wasn't interested in that. This was done by the county, which has always done it. Every year I've been here, and I've been for my 26th year, we haven't done it in 12 years. We're way over the time, and it's a prosecutorial offense not to do this. You have the feds and the state. Fortunately for us, and the problem, we didn't do it 10 years ago. I won't tell you what district it was, but one district convinced all the rest not to do it, and we didn't do it, or they didn't do it. If you'll see all those streets and all those alignments, they're very difficult to do. It took our clerk a long time to even type the thing out. It's not perfect. I'm going to, I had a conference with Mr. Giorgio tonight. We have a map. I am going to, if we pass it, go down to the Election Bureau, maybe tomorrow, next day, and I'm going to have the Election Bureau pinpoint the districts for me, so that they're correct and identified according to the numbers of the districts that we have changed. They're not, the changes are not really that big, double up. And then, I will, with the cooperation of Mr. Giorgio, will present you with an ordinance to adopt the map as approved by the Election Bureau. And that, then it's over. 10 years will go by before anybody has to face this again. And again, if you look at the numbers on the map, it shows like some areas increasing, some increasing. It's pretty close to the 9,000 per district, you know, there's, you know, if you've got 68,000 people, you've gotta be close to a little over 9,000 each district, something like that. Some will be a little more, some will be a little less. But it's a very large task. It took the election, I'm sorry, it took the Planning Board of Atlantic County, when we first met in December, oh, yeah, it was November, it took them until something like about four weeks ago, that it was all finalized. And to get it finalized, I went to the county executive personally, and asked him if he would tell the planning commissioner of the county, only just to give me cooperation, and let us work together, and I wouldn't have any of that problem with the political barriers and that sort of thing. I wasn't interested in the politics at all, not at all. But we know that the districts are gonna change, not because of the lines, but because of people who move, and move around. You've got a project down on Bleecker and Culver, I think it's gonna develop into people. I think you've got a project behind the Stanley Theater, bringing people living in that district. You're gonna have a project maybe in West Utica, where that big, all that property was knocked down. You have this whole renovation right on Geno C Street, next to the Fort Scotty Club. I don't know what's gonna happen there. So, we have a lot of things happening, and a lot of things will happen in the next 10 years. But at least, you will have complied with the law, and it's over. And I don't, as your attorney, don't have to keep worrying about this. And it's a, in a way, I'm proud that our deputy clerk typed all this out, and that was all done with the help of the county planning department. I have never had so much cooperation from another political body and government as I did with them. So, I'm saying to you that this local law's not perfect. The districts are not perfect, but you're never gonna get perfection, because people move.
Thank you. Mike has a question for you.
Judge, in this, do you have the ability, do you have to do it in, with pulling a complete election district over, or do we have the ability to redraw the line of a separate election district? Because it is my underst-
You're not gonna change these lines again in 10 years, I don't think. Because the only law that you're facing is you have to redistrict your city to make sure the population and voting is even with the representatives who represent them. And you have to go by the number six.
So, within that, are you able to redraw the line of a election district?
Can you do it? You mean now?
Before this is passed. Are you able to do that?
Sure. Somebody wants to take on that task.
My understanding, and I think-
But I'm not gonna do it, I'll tell you quite frankly. I'm not gonna do it.
The 5th Ward council person is, what's being transferred over, not necessarily by people, but by stuff. And that seems to be a big, they're feeling that they're not gonna have the appropriate representation. No disrespect to the 3rd Ward.
I don't think it has anything to do with representation, but the conversation I had, and I explained it exactly the way you guys are explaining it to the people in the 5th district, but they were very upset that I spent $400,000 on the only park that we have in our neighborhood, which has come apart, with our money that was allocated to me, and with these new loans that are drawn, that is in a different district.
So, my point possibly is, the park doesn't have a population.
Right.
So, the park does not need to be moved. So, if we took extra time and redraw 5-2, so you're still maintaining representation of the park on paper, that could be a compromise for that community.
Did you mention the district number?
It would be the 5-2 that-
The numbers on the map-
I understand. But we can talk about, I just-
Are not coordinated.
Right.
And I'm sorry for that, because quite frankly, I didn't realize it, but when we were talking about it, when I was talking with the county- When we were talking about it, when I was talking with the county, they said that they are, the carving will include present districts, so that the Board of Elections doesn't have a big to-do about moving their units around. I intend to make the map a separate issue. Do you want to say something, Mr. Giorgio?
No, I just, I think Mike had a different question, but I'll talk to you about, I'll talk to you over, in the break.
Pardon me?
I'll talk to you during the break.
Okay, fine.
I had one question on that. Don't you have to delineate this by actual street names? Is that how, how it's done? I was told that, that when you do it, you actually have to delineate it by the actual streets. Is that how we do it, or?
Right, yeah.
And I think it's a great idea what you did on that front thing there. That's great. That'll let you keep, that'll let you keep that front in there.
So, so my interpretation, we're leaving this on the table until we make that amendment for the parks? Okay. Okay, so we're gonna leave it on the table. Thank you. Well, if you're gonna leave it on the table, then I'm not going down to the Board of Elections until you decide on a, if you have amendments, and they're drawn, and you pass the amendments, that is fine, whoever does it, if Mr. Giorgio does, one of you do it. But I will hold up on the map and the elected districts until that has been completed, and until this actually has been adopted. Then I will do the map thing. Is that okay with you, Mr. Giorgio?
Yes.
Okay. Question, can we make them amendments? Pardon me? For the, for the two parks? I don't know.
I don't know, I'm gonna talk with the judge.
So we'll leave it on the table until you can back with us?
Until we can do that, yes.
Okay, okay. The next thing up is calling a hearing for a public annual estimate. I don't see it in front of me, but it's here. Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, we're calling for a public hearing, RE Annual Estimate 2024-25, on Wednesday, March 20th. The county council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM. Any questions? This is a public hearing.
The budget.
This is the night we have to have the budget in by, as far as I know.
Yes, that's correct.
So we're gonna put that in committee until the, to the 20th of March.
You're voting on that tonight?
We're gonna vote on one, and the other one, we're gonna, right. I'm sorry, thank you. There's always a public hearing on the night that you pass the budget, which will be the 20th. And there was a couple of things we're gonna pull out of committee. We're gonna pull up the sale of 1419 Lincoln Ave. It's in my district, and I'm good with it. The next is the- Proposition number 10, the resident dwelling, which is an ordinance amending Section 21253 6A, residential dwelling registration fees of the Utica Codes. They're going from $40 up to $55. I think we can bring that out of committee tonight and vote on it. Is there any amendments to be made? Fair enough, we'll pull that out of committee tonight. Number- Number 13, resolution authorizing adjustment to the 2023-24 solidary service charge. Whereas Section 1, Subdivision 12 of local law number 1 of 1990, a person may appeal a determination made regarding the levy of a social waste service charge. Any questions? Okay, well, we're gonna pull that out of committee and talk about it tonight. And I think the last thing I have here is the proposition number 15, whereas a resolution nominated a candidate for the Upper Mohawk Valley Regional Water Board. His name is Dennis Bova. We were waiting to get a letter from him, we got it. I think, I think we can pull it out of committee tonight, and we can vote on it. Any questions? No questions? Now, before I close, I have a question. We have that budget meeting, and the two years we're talking about, that you said you were gonna be out of town. I want, I wanna try to work it where Joe can be there. And, and Jack, if you could come up with another date. 10th of- Well, well, we have time, we should be able to accommodate each and every one of us. So what day did you have it scheduled for, Jack?
We have special meetings on the 5th, the 6th, and the 11th.
Special meeting on the 5th, the 6th, and the 11th. The 6th is a regular meeting, correct?
Or the 5th and 7th. Wait a minute, I'm sorry, we had it on the-
Are you, are you looking for the special meeting?
Yeah.
So you wanna do one on March 5th at 7:00 o'clock, that's what you voted on? And then you, and then you wanted the 13th of March.
Now, the 13th of March is the date you're talking.
You changed, on Mon, so you changed the first budget meeting to Monday, March 5th?
Right.
So originally, it was February 26th.
Right.
So you changed it to March-
So, wait a second. No, we're all here right now, we got contracts.
Then why can't we go on the, on the 18th of March, where you'll be back by then?
I'll come back that day. I won't be back, so I won't be back.
Well, then we can do it the 19th, as long as it's before the next meeting, right?
That's fine.
Well, this, you know, I don't have a problem meeting the 19th and doing a budget on the 20th. Anybody foresee a problem? I don't see.
Well, you're having, let me ask you this question. It's a simple vote. You're having, you're having a double meeting on when the, you're having a 5:00 committee meeting, and then we're gonna have a 7:00 special meeting.
That's correct.
To vote on, okay? Why couldn't you, why couldn't you do it right then? Vote on two things, instead of just having one? It's not, it's not like it's a main-
Well, we- We can call a special meeting as the time goes on as well, if we're not, we'll see.
We can bring that up, and if it doesn't have this-
Well, we're all right here right now.
Right, but we can bring it up at that second meeting you mentioned, the one we're having, the double meeting.
Right.
And then we'll, at that time, we'll go forward, so we don't have to set up a time in March of- Is that okay?
No, we'll discuss it.
Well, that's what I said, we'll discuss it.
Yes, we'll discuss it. So right now, we are so- So right now, to confirm, March 5th, the special meeting will be 7:00 PM. That's the only difference.
That's correct, and we're gonna talk-
Hang on a second here.
March.
On March 5th, you're having a 5:00 meeting too?
Yes.
Yes.
And then we're having a special meeting right after.
That day, yes.
So, we're all here right now, what, and the special meeting, what are we doing on that? We're voting on-
We have amendments that we'll probably bring into the floor that day.
So after that, okay, you're gonna vote on these amendments, why couldn't you just vote on the simple thing, if we're gonna raise the budget 2% or not?
I feel like we already explained that in the last meeting, and I very much echo Jack's thoughts, and we're just not ready yet. We wanna go through the budget, we wanna do amendments.
The next day?
We'll see what the mayor discusses.
We might be, yeah. No, I won't be ready the next day.
But we can still bring that out on the 5th of March.
It could be no, this can be no later than March 11. All right, so figure it out.
Right, well, we already did figure it out, except you just wanna fight everything we tried to say.
I'm just letting you know.
Whatever, okay.
So I'm not fighting. I'm fighting for the people of the city of Utica.
Okay, okay, point of order.
I did, Joe.
Enough, enough?
We've done quite well in this area.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, anybody second? Thank you. We're starting our meeting at 7:00 o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
To order, City Clerk will take role. Please stand for the pledge, followed by a little bit of silence for the seats members of the county council. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Does the Chair have a motion, a second, to dispense with the reading from the previous meeting?
Take a motion.
I'll second.
Yeah, we have a public hearing tonight. There are no people signed up. Do I have a motion to pull proposed ordinance number six from committee?
Take a motion.
I'll second.
Ordinance approving designation of Sonya Ahmed as an eligible and qualified project sponsor pursuant to Article 15 of general municipal law for the purpose of the sale of 1419 Lincoln Avenue. Whereas the purchase offer for this property has been received by Utica Urban Renewal Agency from Sonya Ahmed, and the developer proposes to purchase 1419 Lincoln Avenue to renovate for primary residence, and the purchase will require the payment of $30,000. Can I have your votes?
Aye, 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 adopted.
Public comment period. Common Council has provided you a copy. Eugene Bradley? Eugene, Common Council has provided you a copy of section, public comment period. Are you in agreement with 3-244?
Yes, yes.
You have three minutes. State your name, please.
First name is Eugene, last name Bradley, raised and born in Utica, New York, stockholder. Okay, my concern is, you know, I've been coming to these meetings for the last three sessions, because this is going to be my duty as a good citizen. But while I'm coming to these meetings, I'm very analytical, I write everything down. First of all, question is, is there a training session for the councilmen? When you get elected, is there a training session for you guys to familiarize yourself with policy procedure, the rules, decorum? I mean, is there? That's just a common question. Just, is there training or no training?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, we need training. Now, the other thing I'm concerned about, the fiscal year starts April 1st, right? The mayor budget fiscal year. Yeah, it's a little bit late for you guys to be now starting to discuss it or just getting to packing. You know what I mean? So you guys got to work on that. Give you ample amount of time to review the information, so you can have input with the mayor. You got to set up a better rapport between the mayor office and the council. And the last thing, my observation was, corporate counsel. We need more definitive answers from her, because she was giving answers in that last session, just like off the top of her head. I didn't feel like they were definitive. So if you're going to play the role of corporate counsel, you should have definitive information and answers.
Thank you, Eugene.
Thank you.
Anil Raymond? Emily Raymond? Emily, Common Council has provided you a copy of section 3-244, public comment period. Are you in agreement?
Yes.
You have three minutes. Please state your name.
Yes, I'm Emily Raymond. I live in the city of Utica. Just want to talk briefly about my opinion on a few things, and I don't have any direct thoughts or feelings, but hopefully something we can all reflect on. So on the marijuana, I'll go on record as saying I love marijuana. I have a son who lives in Oakland, California, and, you know, I grew up in the 60s and 70s, and marijuana's cool. But what I'm hoping is that no matter what we do, in the end, we don't end up being that kind of place like in Oakland, where, you know, we're walking around with strollers or even ourselves, and having to breathe in, you know, the smoke, because some people think it's really cool to smoke, and they very obnoxiously blow it in the face and that type of thing. I don't know what you do about that. I don't know how you curb that. I don't know how you, you know, monitor and enforce laws around that, but hopefully whatever we do, it's not a, you know, we're not that city where, you know, people complain that I went somewhere and there was all this smoke blowing in my face. On the budget, I come from, I grew up in Utica, and I've lived here now for more than 12 years, but other places I've lived, budget was often participatory. And so as a citizen, I wish that, you know, there was a means where we could have town halls or meetings or write-ins, or some way that as citizens, we could put forth what we would like. I don't, you know, even a suggestion back somewhere, you know, six months before budget season. And with regard to this budget, although obviously I'm not privy to any details in it, what I would really like is a line item in our city's budget is for all the departments, police, fire, not just the solid waste or the, yeah, solid waste, but where we could get a postcard, newsletter, or something, you know, on a annual, semi-annual basis. I think it's really important that the citizens, because we're so multilingual, what do we, many, many languages, would be nice to have something that comes out, and even if the city can't translate it to hard copy, because that's not cost-effective, that maybe they go to, you know, the Bosnian Center or the...
Emily, you're going to have to finish up.
And have it translated. But to get everybody on the same page, what the police department does is really important. What the fire department does is really important. We just had a fire on Noise Street, and it was sad, and God only knows. Do people know not to have a dry Christmas tree? Things like that. Anyway, I'd like to have a multilingual form of communication to all the citizens, and I'd like that to be worked into our budget for codes, fire, and police, not just, you know, trash pickup. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Testa? Anthony, Common Council has provided you a copy of section 3-244, public comment period. Are you in agreement?
Yes.
You have three minutes. State your name, please.
My name is Anthony Testa. I'm a resident of the city of Utica. I live on Francis Street. Let's embrace the fact that we may not all agree, but can earn respect through consistency, transparency, and commitment to our community. I'm here tonight to speak on the ordinance that will expand the existing cannabis smoking ban to include sidewalks within the prohibited public areas. Here in Utica, particularly West Utica, we as a community recognize the challenges every day, including but not are limited to poverty, broken homes, youth violence, homelessness, resource limitations, lead poisoning, and congregated settings. There was one topic that stands out in my head related to lead poisoning. That comes from soil, homes and piping, and all things lead. That is the impact that we as a community have emphasized. Katie Yellow has a graph that she shared at the January West Utica Neighborhood Association meeting correlating lead with violence. Science and evidence shows that cannabis and lead result in similar outcomes. Cannabis has contributed to mental health issues as well as violence. Evidence-based neuroimaging, neurocognitive, and preclinical findings on the effects of cannabis on the adolescent brain are real, and research has been conducted longer than I have been alive. The evidence is available. Disruptions in brain development related to neurotoxic affects us all every day, but especially those residing in underdeveloped communities. Marijuana alters normal brain development, leading to problems in learning, memory, coordination, reaction time, emotional stability, and judgment. So although someone thought cannabis legalization in New York State was a great idea, I am asking you to educate yourself about the long-term effects of cannabis and exposure on youth. I would expect if you are a strong lead poisoning advocate, they would be a strong advocate against cannabis for similar outcomes. We, the community, look for consistency, transparency, and commitment to our community from each and every one of you, not only when it benefits your word, but when it may challenge your word. Difficult conversations most definitely create a stronger community. Anthony Testa. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Jay McFarlane? Jay, the Common Council has provided you a copy of section 3-244, public comment period. Are you in agreement?
Yes.
Three minutes. Please state your name.
My name is Jay McFarlane, as most of you know. I will be very brief, something that's funny there. I'm getting a little bit better here now, so I can come visit you good people down here. And I would like to know when the meeting is going to be for St. Elizabeth's restructuring up there. They told us in the meeting in December, it was going to be in February. I have called Joe Bittar and my county representative, and I've gotten no answers. Are we going to kick this can down the road? They told us February, and to the architects, we're supposed to do something about this. How much longer do we have to wait for St. Elizabeth's? They told us in February they're going to have a meeting. Now, unless I'm going deaf, I think February is coming up, and there's been no notice of any meeting. So I don't know, what are we supposed to do? Wait so that they make a decision? They want the community input, which I don't think they do. I've got a couple ideas, and I didn't like the ideas that they came up with down there. And they separated us, and they didn't take any questions. So I don't know when we're supposed to get that meeting started. So nobody's got any answers, or we're just, so would I come back in two weeks and I'll say, "Okay, we're not going to have another meeting"? Or when? It's all been said and done. So just questions. All right? Do you not have any?
Well, this is public comment, so I wasn't going to give...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
It'll be scheduled next month.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. We do have a guest speaker tonight, Alan Walther from the Bondillo Group.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Alan Walther. I'm a partner with the Bondillo Group. We are the auditors for the city of Utica. Tonight, I would like to present the results of the audit of the city's financial statements for the year ended March 31st, 2023. We issued the final reports in January. I believe that each of you on the city council was provided with reports in electronic format. The scope of services that we provide for the service for the city, our primary objective is to audit the financial statements of the city and give our opinion on them. In conjunction with that, we also perform a uniform guidance audit, and that's required because the city spends in excess of $750,000 of federal aid. The overall results of the audit for the year were that we issued an unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements. That is the highest level of assurance we can give on the financial statements, and that is the opinion that all the users, the bond rating agencies, the State Controller's Office, et cetera, that is the opinion that they will be looking for. We did have two internal control findings, which I'll talk about a little bit as I go through the reports with regard to the city's financial reporting. And I'd also like to thank the controllers. I know the controller isn't here tonight, but I'd like to thank the Controller's Office for all their assistance in getting the audit done. Audit is a collaborative effort, and we can't get done what isn't provided to us. A couple required communications items that the city council should be aware of. You know, with regard to accounting policies for the city, during 2023, the city adopted a new accounting standard pertaining to leases. That was required. We worked with the city to adopt that. The city also created a health insurance fund, and that was new. Accounting estimates in the financial statements, you think of the financial statements as numbers, you think of numbers as exact. There are some significant estimates, estimates primarily affect the city's government-wide financial statements. The most significant estimates being depreciation, other post-employment benefits, which is an actuarial estimate of the city's obligation to its retirees and employees for health insurance. Our role with regard to the estimates is to evaluate them and consider if they're reasonable to the financial statements as a whole, and we did that, and we believe that they are. There were no significant difficulties in performing the audit, no disagreements with management with regard to application of accounting principles for access to accounting records. With regard to the city's financial statements, you know, if you had a chance to review the report, I know the report is very lengthy, and, you know, we're not going to go through it in great detail, but there's really two sets of financial statements that are required by the governmental accounting stance for it. There's the citywide financial statements, and then there's the fund-level financial statements. And the difference being, the citywide financial statements are accounted for using the full accrual method of accounting, which means that you recognize, ask... accrual method of accounting, which means that you recognize assets, you recognize liability regardless of when you pay them out. And the fund-level financial statements are accounted for using the modified accrual basis of accounting, which is the same method of accounting that the city uses for its budget. Okay? So the fund-level financial statements are probably more applicable to the budgetary. The citywide financial statements are probably more applicable to, you know, very long-term planning. Some of the highlights of the citywide financial statement, the city's net position at the end of March 31st, 2023, was $101.5 million. That is the net result of your assets minus your liabilities. Some of the highlights there, your total current assets, which are cash and receivables, were $96.3 million. Your non-current assets, which are primarily the buildings and equipment, infrastructure, $208 million. Your current liabilities were $91 million, which your accounts payable, current portion of long-term debt, bands payable, and your long-term liabilities were $112 million. The largest piece of that being your other post-employment benefits, which were $65.2 million, and then the long-term portion of bonds payable. At the fund level, which again, the funds are that, you know, the general fund is the primary operating fund of the city, capital projects fund, et cetera, et cetera, the highlights there, you had a total combined fund balance across all the funds, a deficit fund balance of $9.6 million. The reason for that deficit is because the capital projects fund had a deficit of $31 million, and the primary reason for that is just the way that governmental accounting works. When you issue bond anticipation notes, those are recognized as a liability, and then as you pay them back or replace them with long-term debt, they are recognized as revenue. So as the city pays those bands back or replaces them with long-term debt, that deficit will go away. At the general fund level, which, you know, as we talk about the budget, that's the fund for, the primary fund for which the budget pertains to, the fund balance at the end of March 2023 in total was $12.8 million. $3.25 million of that was restricted, and $7.9 million was unassigned. Some of the highlights of your results versus the budget, your revenue budget for the year was $89.2 million. Your actual revenue was $91.9 million, so we had a net favorable budget variance of $2.7 million. Your expenditure budget was $86.8 million. Your actual expenditures were $89.2 million, so you overspent your budget by $2.7 million. You had other uses budgeted of $2.6 million, so you had a net unfavorable budgetary variance of $1.4 million for March 31st, 2023. With regard to our financial statement findings, there were two material weaknesses that were reported. One has been a repeat comment with regard to capital projects and reconciling them. So that was a repeat comment. And then the second comment we had was new this year with regard to overspending the budget. It is a requirement that when you have appropriations, you need to have, or when you have expenditures, you need to have budgetary appropriations there. So we had a comment with regard to that. And then finally, with regard to the city's uniform guidance report, which pertains to your federal spending, no internal control findings there, no compliance findings. The city spent approximately $29.6 million of federal aid, and the major programs that we audited this year were the coronavirus relief funds, where the city spent $14.4 million, and the CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, where the city spent approximately $4.5 million. That is the extent of my comments, unless there's any questions from the council members.
There's a question. How would you rate the fiscal condition of the city as of now?
The, so at the end of March 31st, 2023, the city's general fund, fund balance was approximately $12.8 million on a, let's say, $85, $90 million budget. I would say, you know, not, I didn't do the math in my head, but it's probably 15%, 16%. The GFOA, which Government Finance Officers Association recommends 16% to 20%. So probably, you know, right about the bare minimum of where it should be, you know, again, back to 2023.
Councilman Beatrice?
Yeah. Thank you. Great job. Just a couple of things. So you say at the end, this is for, and I want to reiterate for everybody out there, this is last year's budget, '22, '23, not the budget that's going to end in March.
Correct.
Correct. So you said we had a surplus of 12, what'd you say, 12.5 million?
12.8 million.
So there was never a $14 million surplus. It was 12.5.
It was $14 million, I believe, at the beginning of the year.
Okay. And at the end there, you, okay.
Yeah.
And, and so this budget, at the end of that year of last year's budget, we're in the hole, $2.3 million, correct? We overspent that budget?
Yes.
Okay. And then my last question to you is, so you did this budget for '22, '23. It says the city is currently without a full-time budget director. We are now, but during '22, '23, we had a budget director the whole year.
Currently, as of the date, the date of the report was January of 2024.
Right.
So now, yeah, I understand.
But I mean, when you, when you went through this budget and did this, the city had a budget director for all this stuff.
Through March 31st of '23, yes.
Yes. Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other council members with questions?
Councilman Beatar? Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for coming in. So speaking more of a Councilman Beatrice's point regarding the deficit, what was that exact number? I apologize. The overspending compared to what we budgeted for compared to what was spent, the 86 and 89 million, right around $3 million? Was there a certain area where the overspending occurred the most? Was it one area, multiple areas where the overspending occurred? Can you speak a bit to that?
There were, I can't speak of, you know, the details. You'd need to reach out to the comptroller's office. They could give you exact details. The overall budget was overspent by approximately $2.3 million. So, you know, I mean, again, the comment that we made is that, you know, again, that expenditures need to be supported by appropriations.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Alan.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any communication from the mayor? Mayor Golimy?
Sure. Apologize, I would have been here earlier, but I was away with my children. My birthday today.
Happy birthday, man.
Yeah. Yeah. The only reason he's here, he wanted to let everyone know. No, I did mean, you should tune in, though. Alan, thank you very much, Mr. Walter. Always appreciate it. And I look forward to hopefully having you audit the year we're in as well. So thank you. A couple of things today. First and foremost, and I was tuning into some of this, so I want to address some things that were stated. The budget. The ENA budget was posted online. Everyone was notified. Everyone had the budget. Every single person in this entire room had the ENA budget.
You said that wasn't your budget, I think is what you wrote.
Would you like to keep your council people in order?
Please.
I apologize.
Thanks.
The mayor's speaking.
I just wanted to correct you.
So the budget that wasn't the budget, now, this is the mayor's message, and since the council person is being antagonistic, I'm going to speak specifically to that. The first meeting, the first Monday in February, the budget that was presented was a piece of paper, working with ENA on the numbers of the fund balance, looking at the overages that we had to deal with, looking at the new contractual increases for not only our employees, but also what we were dealing with, with healthcare, the potential increases in the state retirement contributions, which we now have estimated from the state and in the final budget. Now, on the first Monday, that wasn't the budget. I love your smile, Jack. It's the best. But then...
Jack.
No, no, no. So in all seriousness.
Medical.
Last Tuesday, when I presented the mayor's budget, that was the mayor's proposal to ENA. That was the budget. It was posted online. Every single person in this room had access to it. The only reason councilperson, prior councilperson friend had a budget was because she emailed the mayor's secretary and said, "The mayor said I could have one printed," when the reality is I told her I would contact her and let her know because it's electronically available. So every single person had the budget, and you also have an ENA representative that you've appointed, councilperson Iola. She had the budget. She knew it was electronically available as well. She's your appointee on the Board of ENA, and that budget not only was presented, but it was available to every single person in this room. So you had a budget. Now...
I don't have a printer. It's, you know, 300 pages.
Do you have a budget in your hand right now?
I do have it.
All right. So now I'm going to explain the legislative process that's in our charter. The Board of ENA has till February 20th to present this body with a budget. Do you have that budget in your hand?
It's on the table.
It's on the table. Okay. So I guess my point here is, if you were on the Board of ENA...
I was.
You are now. You would have had the Board of ENA budget, just like the charter said you would have it. And then when the Board of ENA passes it to the council, every single council person gets that budget.
I'm not complaining. You're asking us to do things, and I just was waiting for it.
I, but you...
This is the day I'm supposed to get it. I'm not complaining.
Oh, great. Perfect. This was the day you were supposed to get it.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. Now, about the budget and the tax cap. I presented to ENA, and it's posted on YouTube, and the clerk has the PDF of the presentation, a very detailed analysis of why and how I had to put this budget together the way I had to put it together. This wasn't just some flippant tax increase. This is a balance of an unfortunate realization that our revenues don't meet our expenditures. As you just heard from Bondejo Group, 2023 ended in a $1.3 million deficit. The fiscal health of the city is not what it was at the end of 2022. We're burning cash right now. This budget year, when it closes at the end of March, is projected to also be a deficit. That means we're going to burn more cash. Ultimately, what this means is, if we don't right the ship now, we will end up not having cash to pay payroll, just like happened 12 years ago. We will have to take out short-term bonds to actually meet the cash flow requirements of running this city. Okay? That is the position that we're looking at right now if we don't act now. Now, this is the mayor's proposed budget. It is now with the council. I absolutely would like to work with every council person. Has anyone reached out to me yet, as of yet to schedule a meeting about the budget? Okay. So it's been six weeks. We put this budget together. It's a responsible budget. I have an extremely detailed proposal outlining 1.7, I think, $1.8 million increase in state retirement contributions, over $1 million in required health insurance increases. The FIRE contract, completely deserved, every single raise they have, it's a compound over four years, which is why it's hitting us so hard. It's $1.7 million in this contract. All of the other contractual raises added up. That all adds up to $7 million different than last year. Okay? That's before all of the other overages that we could go through. Please dissect this budget as much as you can. What you'll see is that with the tax increase, we are having to balance this budget with fund balance. What does that mean? We have to appropriate the fund balance before we close the books, just to make this budget work. With regard to the tax cap, I'm going to reference the legislative process again. The mayor proposes a budget to ENA. ENA passes that budget to the council. If the council, and you remember this, we used to not want to pass the tax cap when the mayor was putting the budget together, because if we waived the tax cap when the mayor was putting the budget together, right? That would tell the mayor, you could go raise taxes if you want, because the council's letting you do it. Okay? This council didn't do that. Okay? They held their ground and didn't waive the tax cap before the budget was presented, and I respect that. But the reality we're in now is this budget is in the council's hands. So if you waive the tax cap, you don't have to try and keep the taxes at 16.5%, just because you waived the tax cap. But if we don't waive the tax cap, okay? And I cannot sign the tax cap legislation by March 20th, when we pass the budget, and this council does not find the ability to lower the tax burden or figure out how to cut things to lower that tax burden, and we don't find that solution, okay? Because this is in the council's hands now. Okay? This is in the council's hands. If we don't find that solution, and we don't waive the tax cap, the tax increase still happens, but all of that money goes into a specific account, and we cannot touch that money until the next fiscal year, 2026. This is how it works. And then what will have to happen is even though we raise the taxes on the people, we'll still have to cut services. Okay? So we'll end up raising taxes and cutting services. So just with regard to the tax cap, and I know councilperson Testa's not here, I just wanted to discuss that. It's why I tried to get back here and come to this meeting, because I wanted to discuss the tax cap. That's passed. You don't have to do it, but if you don't pass it, and we don't have time for the public hearing, and all of the other process that's involved with waiving the tax cap, and we end up needing that tax cap waived because it's a necessity, it won't matter anymore. It won't matter anymore, and we won't have a way to run the city within that. Now, a couple of other things in the budget. There's been discussion of property. Everyone knows that we're potentially selling Kennedy Garage, $1.5 million. Previous administrations would put that in the budget as revenue and say, hey, that's $1.5 million. We can lock the taxes down 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, probably 5.5% by using that $1.5 million to, you know, have that as revenue. Okay? But the problem is that would be pure paper revenue. It's going to cost us $7 million to move out of Kennedy Garage. So the fact that the previous mayor agreed to sell it for $1.5 million, and there may be some appetite to put that in the budget, don't bite that apple. That $1.5 million is going to cost the city $8 million to get. Okay? These are realities. I'm not making this up. I don't enjoy any of this. Okay? I wanted to come into this and be six weeks into this office doing something positive and only something positive, not dealing with the ultimate responsibility of keeping the doors of the city open. And that is how I've put the budget together. So please, this budget I spent countless hours on, the comptroller's office spent countless hours on, I met with every single department. After I put together departmental estimates with them, I created the mayor's proposal. But as you go through these lines, what you'll see is I went through it almost like I was still a councilperson after. I cut a lot of the things and hacked them, because I'm like, this is not good. Okay? I almost, and I sat there and I was like, oh, if I'm going through this like a councilperson now, what's going to be left? And that concerned me. So as crazy as it sounds, this budget's lean. But as crazy as it also sounds, you just heard from our auditor that at the end of March 2023, we had a deficit, which means at the end of March 2024, we're going to have another bigger deficit. of March 2024, we're gonna have another bigger deficit, and we keep asking about the fiscal health of the city and our fund balance. It's shrinking. We're burning cash. If we don't right that ship, the city will ultimately be in trouble, and we're only gonna be back at this table having the exact same conversation next year, but having kicked the can even further. Uh, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Reports from city officers. Um, Megan Scott.
Thank you.
Human Resources.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Angersall, Fire Chief.
Nothing to report.
Stephanie DiGiorgio, Corporation Counsel.
Nothing to report.
Brian Thomas, Urban Renewal.
Nothing to report.
Deputy Chief Moonin.
Uh, just with regards to Mr. Bradley's comment earlier about definitive answers. I've been at the stable for seven years, and, um, it's very difficult at times to answer questions when, when you're not, you know, you don't always have the information in front of you. But I've seen all the department heads, uh, respond to questions, go back, give the information, provide that information to whomever's asking those questions. So, I, I just, just wanted to comment on that. And, uh, aside from that, I have nothing to report, but I'll be available after to answer any questions anyone might have.
Thank you, Chief.
See, that's why I told you to go around this way. Now, I could check something off my list. That was, that was nice. Um, a couple things positive. Uh, this past weekend, the Youth Bureau had their Dick Miller, Michael Harris, uh, championship games for the boys. Um, I did not see your team or Councilwoman Testa's team participating in any of those games.
We were a lot better than Councilman Testa.
Which, which was surprising to me. Um, but a really good thing, hats off to Chet Lacon, the, our Youth Bureau Director, and what, um, they, they did. Um, Whitesboro won at the fourth grade level. Utica won at the fifth grade level. New Hartford won at the sixth grade level, and every single game was within three, three or four points.
Yeah, it was awesome.
It was a, it was a really good, um, good weekend, and those of you that were in attendance, I thank you. Um, we talked about this at the last meeting, a little bit about the redistricting, some concerns in the Fifth Ward, um, about residents there feeling like they're losing their park a little bit. Um, just, we're gonna reevaluate that and see where we can, you know, accommodate that to make sure they feel the residents there are feeling like they get the appropriate representation. Um, one of the meetings, everybody, all the councilpeople talk about their neighborhood association meetings. Um, another meeting that's been happening, Thursday of the month at 3 o'clock at Rebuild the Village, um, is the trust building meetings, the representation from the community, representation from the police department. Um, I've been fortunate to go to the last two. Really good dialogue happening there. So, um, if people are able to attend those and go to a lot of the community meetings, um, you should add that to the list, because that's a really good one.
Thank you, Chief.
Deputy Commissioner Parks, Marcus Okolowski.
Just wanted to say that there's been a nice week for the ice skating rink. A lot of people been up there, and I got to drive the Zamboni, so that's one thing off my bucket list.
Thank you. Commissioner of Codes, Marcus Phelps.
I'm surprised driving a Zamboni was on your bucket list.
Simple life.
Just, just, just a few things. I mean, we're getting problems. You know, the weather is unseasonably nice, um, but I'd like to take a second to yield some of my time to Mayor Delimi.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Um, so now, I'll just do a regular department head type of thing. No, uh, one thing I want to know is, um, look at this table right now. Uh, this table hasn't looked like this in a very long time. This administration is extremely, um, collaborative and wants to work with every single person in this room, including constituents. Um, if I'm not here, the Chief of Staff is here. Um, if there's anything pertinent going on, we're having meetings all day to make sure the people at this table are prepared to present the council with the information they need, if they have any questions at all whatsoever. Uh, so, this, this is the start of a different way of doing business in the city. We're all here to work together, uh, and that's a good thing. Uh, the budget process is never without, um, you know, comment, and, uh, we will get through it. Um, and, uh, I, I can't, uh, say enough that if anyone has any specific questions on what was going through my head when I put this budget together, uh, please reach out. Um, I do want to address something else. Uh, that you're going to see this administration passing legislation down to this council, and when that happens, that doesn't mean this council has to vote on it immediately. It doesn't mean that this administration has found votes to pass something immediately. What it means is, we've had a raw idea from the administration, who does not write law, and we want to give that to the council, so that the council, who does write our city law, and they can work on it, get the feedback they need from the constituents, and then have that feedback brought potentially back to the mayor's office, or the council could potentially work on it on their own, go through those committee meetings, whether or not they want to include the administration or not, and then pass that legislation, and then it gets kicked back up to my office upstairs, and then maybe we keep working on it. That is how we're going to run government in Utica now. It's not going to be, we're sending stuff down and ramming it through. That goes with this, that went with the tax cap legislation, that goes with the ROP legislation that we have down to, to change the, uh, the ROP rates so that we can potentially bring in some more revenue for this budget, because they haven't been adjusted in years. And that also, also goes for, because I know there's quite a people in the audience, uh, who, who may have come here to speak on this, uh, the legislation regarding cannabis. This administration, uh, who also took part in ribbon cutting yesterday, is not trying to ban cannabis. Uh, what we're trying to do is solve some specific problems. Okay? And I'm gonna outline a couple of those problems right now. And the piece of legislation that sits in this council's committee now, right now, I'm assuming is gonna have to be amended, because you're gonna work on it. You're gonna talk to constituents about it. It's also gonna have to touch other pieces of the city code, because our sidewalks also include sidewalk cafe permits at Swifty's, Encore, Green Onion, multiple other places. That's technically a sidewalk, but it's permitted by that restaurant to use as their own little private cafe area on that sidewalk. There's a whole other piece of city code that needs to be addressed for that. This is a multifaceted problem. But what we're trying to do here is create a situation where we can have a dispensary in this city, multiple dispensaries in this city, create a situation where, in the future, when the state says consumption bars not only are legal, but also we can't opt out of those either, those will end up existing in this city. But we want to have the same rails around that that we have with other controlled substances that are perfectly legal and perfectly socially acceptable to use. Now, anyone concerned with medical marijuana, okay? If you're using it for a medical reason, not socially, okay, you're not gonna have to be concerned with that. We've already been talking about that at Corporation Counsel. Okay? What we're trying to curb here is this. This is something I've been dealing with, not only as a citizen, but a councilperson, a baseball coach, a parent at school, a parent picking kids up from the library and other extracurricular activities. Here's what I'm trying to stop. There's people leaning on their car, smoking weed, waiting to pick their kids up. Their kids get in the backseat of the car, and there's people laughing at this right now, but I watch it every day. Okay? Those kids get in the backseat of the car, those parents get behind the wheel, and they drive away. Okay? I want our police department to be able to say, "Hey, you shouldn't be doing that, because you shouldn't be doing that." Okay? We need to redraw the line here. I want to actually de-stigmatize the use of cannabis, but it's never gonna be de-stigmatized if that's going on. It's never gonna be de-stigmatized if I have a church in the vicinity of a dispensary that opened, that I went to the ribbon cutting, and they're freaking out because there might be a bunch of people smoking weed in front of their church. Now, that may almost never happen, but they want the ability to, if it is happening, call somebody and say, "This is no different than someone drinking a fifth of vodka on the church steps or on the sidewalk in front of my church. They're smoking weed in front of my church." Okay? Now, I might sound like a stooge with this, but it goes further. Okay? You've got outdoor restaurants. Okay? We have sidewalks. All right? I'm gonna use Encore as an example. People are eating dinner. Right now, there's nothing stopping a bunch of people standing next to that little gated-in area and smoking weed next to the restaurant. Okay? That's gonna affect that business. Now, we have a dispensary, a block and a half down the road. Now, I would love for the fact that everyone would be considerate, just have a moral compass, and want to have everyone live and let live together, but that's not the reality of it. Okay? I want to make sure that if you do have a permitted cafe permit on a sidewalk, and you are permitting smoking inside that of tobacco, then guess what? You'll also be able to smoke cannabis within there as well. If I can smoke a cigar and drink a scotch, someone should be able to stand next to me and smoke cannabis. That's how I look at it. Not trying to ban weed. We're gonna have to hash this out. There's gonna be a lot of ins and outs on this. The state basically spent the last 20 years banning smoking everywhere and then legalized something we smoke. So, there's not gonna be, uh, a simple transition here, and that's just the reality of it. And I hope that everyone in the city and everyone in this council will work with the administration while we try and put rails around it. And I might add, a lot of these rails are being requested by NICOM and the state. Okay? There's state law that we have to follow, and then if, when the state law doesn't specify something, NICOM is telling the municipality, "You have to figure it out." And I'm trying to figure it out, and I'm doing it publicly. That's why you all know about it. I didn't hide it. I didn't lobby five councilpeople until I could ram something through and get it done. No. I sent some legislation down, and everybody knew about it. Thank you.
And with that, Mr. President, I'd like to conclude my report.
All right. Cool.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Judge Gueramo.
I, uh, I received, uh, an email from Councilman Testa. She said that she thinks the council attorney should have made a comment on the tax cap legislation. And, uh, nobody asked me the question, so I didn't answer the question. Uh, they addressed it to the Corporation Counsel, Mr. Georgia. What the mayor said is absolutely correct. It's a strange law. If you go above the levy, uh, the money that takes, is taken in, whatever the increase is, goes into reserve account, and we, the taxpayers, will pay a tax on whatever the budget is. If it's 8%, 9%, what it is if you don't have, uh, that permission to go above the 2%. If you have the permission to go down to 2%, whatever you pass as a budget, 8%, you get to use. So, that is the comment that, uh, is being requested of me. I, I think the way the mayor put it is almost exactly the same way. It's, uh, and I think that's important for the people who are sitting out there and who are watching this video. If you don't pass the prohibition there and get rid of it, the people are still gonna be taxed, whatever the increase is, but you can't use it, which might cause more deficit spending or some credible, a critical, I'm sorry, uh, cut in services. We all have to be practical. It's just like a household budget. You either got the money or you don't. And if you don't, you borrow it. If you don't borrow it, it costs you more money. So, I, it is my, uh, my practice here. Any councilman can ask me any question, and I will give them the best answer that I have. Nobody asked me the question, so I didn't mention it. I did not do it out on purpose. It's just that that was pretty well explained, and I think the mayor pretty well explained it. Uh, but if the councilman takes the time to send me an email from out of state and ask me to make that comment, I will do that, because that's what I get paid to do. What you do is what you do, what you feel right in doing. And all I do is explain the law. That's all. I don't tell you how to, how to act, how to vote, or do anything like that. Did I say what you expected, the, the matches what you say?
Absolutely.
It does match it, because I know we've done this before.
We've worked on it many years together.
This, this is not exactly a virgin issue.
Yeah.
We've done this before. Yes. Okay. Well, thank you very much, and I thank the President for allowing me to, uh, interject there.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
City Clerk, is there any cash reports?
Yes. The City of Utica Cash Report for January 2024 totals 40.654 million, received and filed.
Thank you.
Districted Appeals, First Ward, Councilwoman Iola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to pass tonight.
Thank you.
Second Ward, Councilwoman Burmaska.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also have nothing to pass. Thank you.
Third Ward, Councilwoman Bittar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a, uh, reminder, uh, the next South Utica Neighborhood Association meeting is, uh, March 11th at 6:00 PM at the Parkway Recreation Center. Uh, and just a, a word, um, on the budget. I think the, the mayor is right when saying it is tough, but we will get through it, and we will get through it together. And thank you for the department heads, uh, coming, and I look forward to our, uh, budget and committee meetings coming up to hear from each of you, uh, and see what the needs of the departments are and what we can do for the departments with also keeping our residents in mind, uh, as we move through this budget season. So, thank you, everyone, again, for coming. And, Mr. President, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fourth Ward, Councilwoman Carcone.
I just hope every councilman comes in here with a clear mind next time and understands what we're talking about with the 0.2%. And I hope it was made clear to everybody.
Thank you.
I don't see the downside to it.
Fifth Ward, Councilman Erva.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't really have it very much. Um, I just want to thank the people tonight that I brought the concerns of, um, on the people in District 5 to the table about, um, the relining of the districts. And there's certain people here that do have the ability to look into it or gonna look into it. Like I told them, do the best you can, and if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, because we do have to get it done. And last of all, I'd thank, um, Judge Gueramo for all the work he did on it, and we'll get it resolved pretty quick. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sixth Ward, Councilwoman Beatrice.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, real, I just got a couple announcements about neighborhood meetings, but I want to just, uh, reiterate one thing. So, in our meeting that we were talking about the tax cap, kept saying that we are here for the people. And it sounds to me, I know they kept saying, "Are, are we gonna get penalized?" Sounds to me, it was overwhelmingly that if we don't pass this as soon as possible, we are hurting the people and hurting them, ourselves. So, I just want to stress that. And then the other thing I just want to say, the, uh, North Utica Neighborhood Association, Monday, February 26th, 6:30, there will be a speaker, um, there about cybersecurity, uh, from Utica University. And then, the other part of my district is on March 4th, East Utica, Peretta Towers, Twin Towers, 6:00 PM. Um, so, I'd like to see all you people come out, and, uh, thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council at Large Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I think we did this tax cap override, I think, six years ago. I think, Mayor, the previous administration came down like with a 9% or 10%, and we got it down to a 4.4, I believe.
I thought it was like 6 and 1/2, but yeah, something like that.
Something. I, I remember. I mean, we knocked some stuff off and stuff, but like you said, and like I, you know, echo what, uh, what Joe Beecher said, and, um, we gotta get it done. It is what it is. If we don't do it, then we can't spend it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council at Large, Lamont Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank the mayor for coming in today, smiling at me. But, uh, listen, what, as the mayor and as a councilman here, our first obligation is to the citizens of this city. And one of our biggest obligations and job as, as a councilman is to pass a budget. Well, you just don't get a budget and just approve it. You go through it page by page, and you take a look at what the expenditures, expenditures were. You take a look at what they spent the prior year, and you try to figure out what they're gonna be spending this year. And you gotta go line for line. This isn't something that you're doing... This isn't something that you do in five minutes after you get a book. This is something that takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of effort. And it's, and it's something that when you're, your first year as a councilman, you're totally lost. But it takes a lot of years to figure this out and to understand how a budget works and where you can find monies and where the monies are. And I'm not saying that the mayor isn't, is hiding monies or anything like that. But once again, as your councilman, we're obligated to go through this and make sure that we squeeze every penny we can out of this budget and, and pass a real budget that is good for the city, but good for the citizens as well. And, Mr. Mayor, I look forward to sitting with you and, and we've worked together over the years, and we have deep respect for each other, and we're going to keep it that way. But, and, and, and I look forward to going over some of these, these ideas that we have about the budget. And I'm sure we can meet in the middle and we'll go from there. But once again, thank you for coming. And once I get through this and we kick up some amendments, I'm sure we'll find something, just like you did over the years. You always find something here and there. And we'll, we'll work through it. And so, till then, thank you again.
Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. We have Local Law 1 and Local Law Number 2. Is it going to stay in committee? Table? Yep. Ordinance 1, a motion to move Councilwoman Burmaster Williamson calling for a public hearing on annual estimate 2024-2025. Thank you. Be it ordained that on Wednesday, March 20th of 2024, the common council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Further ordained that the city clerk is hereby directed to cause notice of such hearing to be published in the official newspaper three times prior to said meeting of the common council. Can I have your votes?
Eight yeas adopted.
Ordinance Number 2, do you have a motion?
Second.
Is there a motion to remove any pieces from committee?
Motion to move Ordinance 5. Wait, which one is it? No, Ordinance 6, sale 1419 we can have. Oh, yeah, sorry. I meant, Ordinance 10, residential dwelling registration fees.
Yep. Ordinance, can I have a second? Ordinance amending Section 2-12536 residential dwelling registration fees of the Utica City Code of ordinances. Be it ordained that Section 2-12536 of ordinances is hereby amended to read as follows. To offset administrative costs of preparing and maintaining the registry of conducting inspections required under Division 4 and following schedule fees for the initial and subsequent registration of rental units in a single rental dwelling is hereby imposed. Dwelling units 1 to 5, $55 per unit. 6 to 10, $65 flat fee plus $30 per unit. 11 to 12, $130 flat fee plus $30 per unit. 20 and up, $200 fee plus $30 per unit. Rooming units, number of units, 1 to 5, $55 per unit. 6 to 10, $65 plus $30 per unit. 11 to 20, $130 plus $30 per unit. 20 and up, $200 plus $30 per unit. Dwelling units combined with rooming units, 1 to 5, $55 per unit. 6 to 10, $65 flat fee plus $30 per unit. 11 to 20, $130 flat fee plus $30 per unit. 20 and up, $200 plus $30 per unit. Can I have your votes?
Eight yeas adopted.
Resolution Number 13.
Motion to pull from committee?
Yep. Can I have a second? Resolution authorizing adjustment to the 2023-24 solid waste service charge. Whereas pursuant to Section 1 subdivision 12 of Local Law Number 1 of 1990, a person may appeal a determination made regarding the levy of the solid waste service charge and be resolved, the common council of the City of Utica hereby approves the applications for adjustment to the City of Utica solid waste service charge for the fiscal year 2023-2024 as follows. Can I have your votes?
Eight yeas adopted.
Can I have a motion to remove Resolution Number 15?
Motion?
Second. Council members Ayala, Burmaster, Beattar, Carcone, Irvin, Beatrice, Williamson, Kalisimo, Testa, Lomano. Resolution nominating a candidate to the Upper Mohawk Valley Regional Water Board, Dennis Bova, 471 Roast Clear Drive, Utica, New York, 13502, for three years, term to expire December 31st, 2026. Can I have your votes?
Eight yeas adopted.
Is there a motion to pull Resolution Number 3? Sponsored by Kalisimo Testa?
No, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't think we have that out there. Is there anything else in committee?
No, that's it.
That's it, that's what I thought. Is there a second motion? Nope. If nothing being removed from the committee, motion to adjourn?
Second.